Can you go here?
He's going to be on the phone.
Not wait for him?
No, I'm just saying when you do the agenda, you might call on him first if he's on.
Is there any reason to move the executive section this evening?
Yes, I'd like to have just a brief chat on police personnel.
Layoffs?
Oh, I had a personnel matter as well.
Two personnel matters. Move we move to executive segments, two personnel matters at the end of the meeting.
Second that?
For discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no. The menu agenda, we are taking two items off. The salt shed and the discussion of the Fire Atlantic movements.
I move we.
And there's an addition as well.
Except that it's amended. Yep, second that.
For discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no. Act on the dog hearing minutes of July 22nd. Any additions to corrections of the minutes?
That's the dog hearing?
Yeah.
Bill Moore.
Hey, Bill.
Hey, Bill.
Hi, how are you?
Good thanks. The silence you hear, Bill, is just us approving some minutes.
Okay.
We're a very quiet board. So far.
I'll break Bill in after the minutes. Minutes of August 5th. You didn't change the question at all, man?
Uh, I've got one thing on the rectorrector section of it. Uh, it talks about replacing Mr. Crossman with Joe Blanchard, but there was nothing about the other part of my motion, which was if Randy decided he wanted to go on, we would open up another position to put him on.
Hey, Butch.
Hey, Butch.
Hey, Butch.
My agenda only eleven minutes.
Oh, did it remind you? You didn't memorize it? What's the matter with you?
You could have borrowed mine, that's okay.
I've spoken to you before. Okay, Bill Moore, you're on, what's up?
Hello, are you guys ready for me?
Yeah, I was just going to introduce you, Bill, by saying that you've led the way in Brandon by establishing a communications union district with the special laws that the legislature has passed in the COVID era allowing select boards to do this without the need for a town meeting to discuss and debate it. The idea is to try to seek out through cooperation and interaction with the state grant funding to bring broadband to the region. And Rutland Regional Planning Commission has already been helpful in that regard. But can you take it from there, Bill?
Sure, yeah, I mean, you answered the fantastic job of explaining it all. Our where. The Rutland Regional Planning Commission applied for a broadband innovation grant to assess the feasibility of expanding broadband in our area. And so they're going through with their team, but this is another way that we can sort of speed up the process and approach that the Department of Public Service suggested, strongly suggested that we form a communications union district to enhance our opportunities about being able to apply for funding. We've already received just as Brandon and Goshen as we're the only member so far in the communications union district, we see the $10,000 grant for the Vermont Community Foundation. And there's more money that's out there to do some of the work that we need to, to either entice companies to expand their broadband access in our communications union district, or to maybe even the possibility of forming our own, our own, I mean, that would be our last, I guess, the last pitch effort to form our own telecommunications company to provide that access. But ideally, with the money that's being stored around COVID and access, we have, you know, we'll get some interested parties and after the feasibility setting done by the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, we'll have a better direction which, where we're going to go or who's going to decide if we want to expand their. We should consolidate this here. We have, we have a detail that has fiber lines that run through the area. You know, get Comcast back their game, especially in some of these places where there's some severe lack of 25 download and four upload speeds, which is good to be faster than. There's a lot of places within our county that just don't have that. That's a bareboat minimum that we need to really make this, you know, robust enough to support remote learning if that's what we need to do in the future, or to make it better for businesses to set up shop in our towns.
And so Bill has given us, if we wish to go forward, a series of three motions that he's learned have to be adopted by any select board. First would be to enter into a CUD like the Brandon-Goshen one. The second would be to appoint one or more representatives to serve on the board that will govern their activities. And third, it would be authorizing the select board chair and town clerk to sign the resolution and appointment document. We do have a person who has expressed a lot of concern about the lack of adequate broadband in town, willing to serve on that board. Her name is Samantha Jackson, and she's been in touch with Butch quite a lot about her concerns, and she's full of energy to try to tackle the issues. I'd be more than willing to serve as an alternate, at least as a placeholder for now, if you'd like. There is a document in your packet listing those three motions that would need to be made.
John Haverstock, Woodshop.
Hi. Go ahead, Butch.
Go ahead, Butch, we'll hear you.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, Tom. I'd just like to encourage the board to enter into this communication use unit district in Brandon and Goshen. It's an opportunity right now that allows us to move forward very, very quickly. I think there's little or no risk to the town of Pittsburgh, and I think Bill Moore would confirm that. And it would get service to folks that are in outlying areas that are either underserved or not served at all right now. There are a lot of companies, and Bill mentioned a couple of them. EC Fiber is another one that has, right now is in partnership with 17 towns in the Northeast Kingdom with a CUD that's trying to get that started. We have great internet in town along Route 7th Quarter, but as we branch out into some of the other areas where we might see expansion of folks moving into town without a high-speed internet, that's a real detriment to our community. So anything, I think anything we can do to bring high-speed internet to Pittsburgh is a positive piece. And I would encourage the board to go along with the CUD. And I know Bill's been, Bill Moore's been deeply involved in this, and I know Bill well enough to know that he wouldn't step off a cliff without having a parachute.
Well, it is a longstanding problem we need to address.
Yep.
I can't see you over there.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think this is something we probably should enter into. I mean, certainly out where I am, yeah, I've got the thing on my silo, but it's wicked expensive. And I think if we can get fiber throughout the town of Pittsburgh somehow, that would be a really good thing. So I will make the motion that, of the first motions, that we enter into this CUD with the town of Brandon.
I'm stuck at that.
For discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no.
So with that having been done, we need to appoint one or more representatives to serve on the board of the Otter Creek Communications Union District?
I will make a motion.
That just to me?
No.
What was that?
Yeah, he's up.
Oh, what was the woman's name or man's?
Samantha Jackson?
Samantha Jackson.
Okay, I will make a motion that we appoint Samantha Jackson and John as the alternate. Unless, if somebody else comes up that really wants to do it to take John's place, but for now, those two.
I'll second that. For discussion? Most say aye.
Aye.
Most say no.
And then third, we just need the board to confirm that Hank and Helen can sign the resolution and appointment document.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that motion. For discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no.
Well done, Bill. Three for three.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I look forward to working with you guys and see that we can approve the broadband access to all of us.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
You too.
Good job, Butch.
Thanks.
All right, back to the orders. Any questions on the orders?
I'll point out, there's several orders. There's one for fiscal year '20, pretty small one. There's one for fiscal year '21, pretty large one. And then there's a couple of debit card purchases, some associated with the recent election, et cetera.
Notice there was a pretty healthy expense, $5,300 for Randall Park Water. What did it have to replace about your line down there?
It's actually $53,000, Joe.
Yeah.
So year after year, we've had one break in that relatively short stretch of line after another. And each of them involved lengthy costly repairs and disruptions to service. The Water and Sewer Commission, working with Sean Hendy, decided after looking at some several bids from contractors that we could do it for that price and resolve kind of an ongoing problem of poor delivery of service to that line.
So we started on in-house ourselves?
Well, no, we oversaw a company, I think, called Champlain Construction that did it through directional boring. It meant we didn't have to excavate the road. We just buried it straight underground. We hit a little bit of ledge on a couple spots, but we did deal with that through insulated board for extra cover. And the project seems to have turned out fairly well.
I also noticed there was a, oh, $3,200 for tires for the loader. And my question is, did they check around to get a price from Ralph, perhaps, or her?
This is the question we wait for every year, Joe, because we know it's coming.
You never do someone?
And so Chad, you Jared, this is your moment to shine.
Yeah, we had the three quotes, one from Pete, one Ralph, and Ray Bean. Ralph and Pete were the same for the space rights thing on their tire. Pete just happened to be lower cost on the mounting. So, probably went with them.
And that wasn't for all four tires, right?
Couldn't have been.
That was just two.
Right.
Yeah, we just went with two. Two were still DSA. Again, those were, those are original tires. So it's the first time we've had to replace tires there, 15 years.
I'm glad to see that you checked around because we have some of that same kind of equipment. It is surprising that there is a difference quite often. Quite often, several hundred dollars on something like this. So thanks for the time you spent checking it out.
Any other questions on the orders? No?
Nope.
Person, Joe. Tom Anderson report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last night, the Water and Sewer Commission met and, among other things, voted to award the Depot Hill Sewer Pump Station Project to Casella, which was the low bidder at a cost substantially less than that which was estimated by the project engineer. I think I gave you a little bit of a summary of those bids at the last meeting. The town and its project engineer are now seeking the best available funding package, which I think I also mentioned last time, might involve some of this newly available subsidy that has become available in this new fiscal year from the state. So let's hope that both items come to fruition. Costs are low and financing is good, together with some grants, to make for minimal impact on sewer rate payers. The Town of Chittenden reclassification of Class 4 roads seems to be on hold, at least with respect to the road we're most interested in, West Road Extension. I think I mentioned at the last meeting that Joe and I had gone up there for a neighborhood meeting on the subject, and there was quite the hornet's nest of neighbor versus neighbor controversy, which I think spooked the Chittenden Board a little bit. They're now looking at surveys provided by parties to some of that litigation about exactly where that road legally lies. And they may or may not pursue the reclassification. Meanwhile, I think I've already mentioned that the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, VTранs, and the Town of Chittenden itself have all gone on record confirming that even if they did reclassify that road, it wouldn't affect public's access to it. Which is, of course, very important since that's how we access our water source up on Mountain Nickwacket and how we access our town forest, the 290 acres wooded area around our sources. Paving is complete for the year. Paving of West Creek Road north from the truck route to the Brandon Line and a stretch of Hollister Quarry Road began August 4th and was completed by Friday, August 7th. Highway foreman Chad U. Chair closely monitored the tonnage amounts to make sure we didn't go over budget. And in fact, we had enough remaining in our budget to do eight tenths of a mile of resurfacing on the south end of Whipple Hollow Road. And it's really a testament to Chad and to Wilk, through good communication, that we managed to spend $326,700 of our $327,000 budget. So they cut that awfully close. And so it's good news that that's eight tenths of a mile we won't have to pay to resurface next year when we want to deal with the rest of Whipple Hollow Road. So, well done on that, Chad. There is a staff meeting to be held Thursday, August 27th at 9:00. As always, selectmen are invited to attend. Finally, I want to point out that in tonight's packet, there is a letter from the Vermont State Police kind of inviting the towns in which they do business, which is virtually every town, at least where they do nighttime or weekend coverage, telling us about their commitment to racial justice in policing and letting us know that they'd appreciate any input their towns have on the topic, and they'd be happy to have a discussion with the board of any town, I think, that wants to discuss the matter. Perhaps we'd want to invite them to a meeting of, an upcoming meeting of the select board to let us know their thoughts and to share our thoughts. Is that something that you folks should be interested in talking about?
Can't hurt, I mean, at least hear what they've got to say.
I discussed it with Chief Warful. He said he's all ears and be happy to hear what they have to say as well. So if that's all right, I'll see about scheduling a visit, maybe in one of the September meetings. And that's all I've got.
Any questions or comments for Tom Anderson report? Select board member remarks. Public comment.
Have you got any public comment there, Butch?
No, sir, I'm just sitting here trying to hear what you're saying.
Pollings update on COVID-19 response.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll just touch on some recent highlights. The town has taken delivery of 700 cloth face masks from the state. We distributed some to staff, and the lion's share has already been made available to Pittsburgh residents through the fire department. Chief Hempel will have an availability to people on the morning of Saturday, August 29th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon at the fire station. It'll be a first come, first served situation, which I think has been advertised on the fire department Facebook page and perhaps the town's Facebook page. Very good. So stay tuned for that opportunity again Saturday, the 29th of August. The rec area now has a porta potty to replace the restrooms, which we pretty much had on lockdown simply because we didn't want to give anyone the false impression that these were sanitized after every use. I think the porta potty sends the message that you kind of come in, use it if you really need to, and there is hand sanitizer in there. The town offices are in the process of converting the conference room to a Zoom-friendly space. We've already upgraded our broadband service, and that'll hopefully enable boards and commissions like this one to meet in person and also virtually with guests and members of the public who cannot be present due to the social distancing protocols, which may be in place for many months to come, I'm afraid. The town is also planning to seek reimbursement for all costs of the equipment, which is now on order, and for all COVID-related expenses incurred to date. Those include expenses for the election, which involved putting up tents outside, those extraordinary expenses, and personal protective equipment that we've bought over the months and many other items. We'll do our best. The guidance from the state is fairly murky, but getting more clear all the time. And we do have a deadline to submit application for reimbursement by early in September. Separately, I should point out Helen is working on taking advantage of digitization of land records. There are grant monies, again, through the COVID relief that the state is administering to update land records or to go back further in time in Pittsburgh's case to record and to scan as many of those documents as possible as a remote alternative to coming in and pawing through books. So those are all things that are in process dealing with COVID.
Any question for John?
Yep. Are making this Zoom-friendly. Did I gather in there the state will pay for some of that?
I guess, put it this way, it certainly sounds as though any steps towns take to be open and transparent to the public during COVID should be reimbursable. I can't guarantee it to you, but that's the guidance I'm generally getting. So we're going to take the approach, I think, as Butch mentioned to me the other day, throw it all against the wall and see what sticks.
Yeah.
Is that an accurate quote, Butch?
You there, Butch?
I'm here.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so.
Question again?
They were wondering, Butch, if things like Zoom-related equipment and the Zoom service itself might be reimbursable under that LGER grant. And I told everybody we're going to throw it all against the wall, as you've recommended, to see what sticks.
Exactly. My conversation yesterday with Fire Department, the tax department, was yes. Everything that you're doing in excess of what you normally would do, you should at least apply for. And if you're turned down by FEMA, then the grant program that's being run by the tax department will take a look at it. Their intent is to backfill the 25% that FEMA typically does not fund, because it's generally a 25, 75% match. And, but other than that, if you're turned down by FEMA over your articles within your request that are typically Vermont-centric, they'll certainly take a look at those. So I would, I would, I guess my recommendation is to apply for every pen, pencil, and tent that you have leased or spent money on as far as COVID goes.
Thank you.
Good. Great. Next, continued discussion of seeking grant and aid for purchase of either a leaf blower or a hydrocedar.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you remember, at the last meeting, we had stated that the grant and aid program, locally administered by the Regional Planning Commission, is making funds available for towns to get 80% grant money toward the purchase of a number of different relatively inexpensive pieces of equipment for highway departments. And the two that seemed of most interest to us were the leaf blower and the hydrocedar. We talked about the leaf blower, and I think Chad's here to answer a few questions about the existing leaf vac, for example, and whether that's redundant to a leaf blower or something that would not be. And as an alternative, a hydrocedar purchase. Again, it's just our, it's just my instinct that if the state's going to offer me 80% of the cost of a piece of equipment that we can make use of, we ought to take it seriously. They've told us in a reminder that later this month is the deadline to submit a letter expressing interest in using that grant money. So I think tonight's the night to decide. So I think tonight's the night to decide whether we want to or not. So Chad, why don't you let us know more about your thinking about those two items?
Can I admit that, John? About what?
Why don't you tell us about the hydrocedar and the blower and why you think you could use one or the other for your operations in the highway department?
Okay. Yeah, actually, I mean, both pieces would be useful. Blower would help in mainly fall grading. Could go along and get the edges of the road blown off. We use the leaf vac currently now mainly for the ditches and the hills, which we have also used for the edge of the road. So again, I mean, the blower would be a little quicker, certain areas save on the, on the vacuuming. And a hydrocedar definitely, definitely would come in handy. I mean, we currently have the veil mulcher for mulch hay. But actually with like the regulations now, with the grants we get with the Better Roads Grant, they require anything later than, I think it's September 15th. But anything late, later in the season, any work that's done, they require being hydroceded. Just because that'll, grass will come off quicker with that versus the hay and regular seed. So I mean, really, any other piece I'd be happy with acquiring if we were able to. But I guess probably lean more towards a hydrocedar now, after giving it some, a little more thought.
Yes. The cost, as estimated by the Regional Planning Commission for the hydrocedar is $7,500, 6,000 of which the state would pay. 1,500 would be the local match for the town. The leaf blower is 7,000. The regional or the state would cover 5,600, again, 80%. The town's share would be $1,400.
David?
I guess, for me, I mean, you, you've got the vacuum, whether it's the perfect tool for the job, but it's, I mean, if you blow the leaves off and the wind comes in, they're going to blow right back. If you're vacuuming them, you're taking them away. So I, I guess I don't see the huge need, granted, I'm not the road foreman, but I don't see the huge need for the vacuum. The hydrocedar, I can attest, and I probably shouldn't say this, but I'm going to, where you guys seeded over on Syndicate Road, nothing came, other than a handful of weeds. I think the hydrocedar would be a lot better. If we're going to do something, the hydrocedar is what we need to do so that you get grass on these roadside, so the ditches. Granted, we haven't had a rain this summer, so there hasn't been a lot of erosion. But if we'd had a lot of rain, those bear banks, you'd have had erosion, you'd have had a lot more problems. And, and the hydrocedar, I would think is going to save you money in the end because you haven't got to buy hay, you haven't got to grind the hay up, you just hydroseed. So I'm not making a motion to get one or the other. I'm just saying if we are to get one, that's the one I feel we should get.
And I'll make just the point again that I did reach out to neighboring communities about sharing one of these items. I haven't heard anything back, I'm afraid.
My only thought is if you're getting, you know, a piece of equipment that's worth $7,000 for 1,400, it's kind of a good deal. Maybe got to grab it while you can. For 3,000 bucks worth.
Well, and if it works. Well, and if it works, we can sell the veil mulcher to somebody else and maybe recoup our money.
My motion would be buy both of them.
I'm afraid I don't think that's a possibility.
Can you do that?
I think we can do one.
Pick one or the other?
I think we have to do one or the other.
Either or.
Either or?
Yeah, only the only one.
Oh, okay. Well, if it's the one, I would go along with Dave then. I think the, the cedar would be the better deal.
Make a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that.
The cedar.
Further discussion? Would the paper say aye?
Aye.
Would the poll say no?
I do have a document we need to have the Select Board members sign. If you wouldn't mind sending it around the horn there, Joe, you can sign it. Thank you.
Sign it and send it along?
Yes, please. And thank you, Chad, for that. You might want to stick around for a couple other topics if you wouldn't mind.
Do it.
Yeah. That's what we've got now.
Yeah. It's interesting how the state, at the same time they're narrowing the window of time when you can not use a hydrocedar.
Yeah, I know.
Is also saying, how about buying a hydrocedar? Carrot and stick together.
Yeah. Well, I mean, mulching, the way we're doing it is hitting mess. I mean, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Whereas a hydrocedar, you probably got a 90, you, you got a 50/50 chance with the hay. You probably got a 90% chance, I would guess, with a hydrocedar. So it, it makes sense, I think.
Update on Recreation Director recruitment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we are making steady progress, the committee. And that also includes our consultant, Bill Moore, who's been very generous with his time to sit in on our meetings to give us his perspective. And the same is true of Randy Adams. While he's not an official member of the REC Committee, although he may be in the future, he's been very good to sit through all these sessions. We had a marathon session including five interviews and about six hours of time earlier this week. We will meet again briefly tomorrow night, we think, to settle on maybe the top two or three out of those five candidates, after which we'll start looking at references. So stay tuned, we're making progress. Meanwhile, maybe at the next meeting, we can talk a little bit more about what the board has in mind about the, perhaps, combination of duties to be performed by the REC Director as also Economic Development Officer. It's certainly true that at least for the next few months, the workload on the REC side is going to be low. It'll be hard not to offer full-time employment since we did advertise it. And this would be one way to make fuller use of that candidate by giving maybe a 25 or even 33% of his time over to that topic. There's been plenty of discussion of that with these candidates, all of whom are willing to serve in that, that dual role like Bill has done. And we can talk about that. We can also talk about what the board would like to do with any savings we're seeing through the vacancy of this position for several months. That could strictly be earmarked for some sort of tax relief to people. It could also be partially devoted to improvements at the REC area. That's another option, capital improvements. Or even just a small, little bit of budgetary authority for economic development work on its own. So these are all, these are all issues we can talk about, I'm hoping we can talk about maybe at a next Select Board meeting.
Or involving loan fund.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was.
Seed money, seed money.
See, no, no, that's, I, I think that would be a, I mean, it's not going to be a lot, but every little bit helps.
For sure, for sure. So these are all topics I'll tee up in a memo and we can all kind of hash it through. And it always happens about 40 minutes in.
Well, we get hooked up with Zoom, maybe we won't have that problem anymore.
Although I do hear there are some problems associated with some Zoom issues.
If you get people who are on their computer and their phone, it doesn't work good.
People crash the meeting.
I don't know about that.
Hey, it's John. We lost you there for a minute, but we're back.
All right, next is review of committee recommendations regarding salt shed construction inspection services.
Mr. Chairman, you've been kind enough, along with Chad, to serve on a committee to, to review proposals from firms willing to serve as our construction inspection service consultant on the salt shed project. And while we haven't tonight awarded a construction contract, there's no reason, I don't think, why we shouldn't make a recommendation to the full board with our thoughts about construction inspection services so we can notify them and they can block off this fall as a time that they might be needed. With that in mind, I'll just point out there's a memo in the packet, I think you've seen it, describing the fact that we received four proposals from engineering firms. Two really rose to the top, and that's DuBois and King and GPI. However, it looked like upon close consideration of their cost proposals, GPI was a better value because they assumed more time on the project, even though the, the numbers were within $1,000, again, GPA being, being the lower one. And the, the kicker on that is that we had a pretty good experience, I'd say, with their services on the Arch and Pleaza Street sidewalk project. Derek Kennison from VTRAZ agrees with our evaluation of these firms. We all scored them similarly. And I think it's fair to say that the committee recommends that this full board appoint GPI as our construction inspection consultant on the salt shed project. Does that sound right to you, Chad?
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I agree also.
That's a pretty cool, so pretty accurate amongst everybody.
Do I need a motion to, to make a motion to appoint them? GPI?
Further discussion?
I will point out that both of those bids are substantially lower than the costs expected by the engineer. So while the construction cost is going to be a little higher, if, if that bid is accepted, the offset will be the construction inspection, which is several, maybe 30, 40,000 dollars less than was estimated. So that's good news.
How, can I ask this question? How much do they want to stand there and watch it being built?
About $29,000.
Holy crap. All right, well. Uh, yeah. Got to make a career adjustment, Dave. Uh, you should have done that years ago.
We didn't pull that.
I know, but it's been seconded, but.
That was further discussion.
That was further discussion, yeah.
Further outrange.
Further, yeah.
So we need to vote.
Would the paper say aye?
Aye.
Would the poll say no?
Right here. Just out of principle, too much money, sorry.
I agree.
I know you got to do it, but, you know.
Motion carries forward.
It's probably a mandate from someone of the.
It's a mandate from the state?
That's where.
I know, but I still don't have to agree with it.
You don't do it, you don't do it.
Yep.
Sometimes you'd be better off the door on your own and forget all the wonderful help.
Yeah, that's what happened today.
Discussion on planned weekend closure of truck route for Vermont Rail work on railroad.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think you probably saw an email thread talking about Vermont Rail's desire to put in concrete panels on the railroad crossing on the truck route over two weekend operations, August 22nd, 23rd, and 29th, 30th, from Saturday morning to Sunday evening each weekend, with obviously signage up for detouring and that kind of thing. Key stakeholder at Omea has been notified and they're on board with it. Casella, their trucking firm, understands that this is going to be happening. And if, if the board here is agreeable, they'll let them know that the town has no objection to that schedule. It's convenient timing because, because of the Middlebury project, the railroad is pretty much dead for this coming set of two weeks. So it's the ideal time, I think, to do it.
This should smooth up that crossing, Butch.
Let's hope so.
Well, I hope so. My question is, if that's closed down for two days and there's a fire on our side, how are the fire trucks going to get that?
Shave has already made arrangements to have additional equipment on that side of town.
Okay.
We have a substation, but you're going to add to it?
We're going to add to it. There's going to be a pumper and a tanker on that side.
Okay. Long ways around.
I'll also talk to dispatch.
And he's also notifying Muscley, Proctor, and Brandon.
I mean, rescue squad can probably go through a depot.
Correct, yeah. I know the chief's aware of this.
And we have notified the rescue squad and the police about it.
All emergency services.
Okay.
They're on it.
What was the times? Because I'll make sure I put that.
I don't have specific times other than to say Saturday morning through Sunday evening.
I know. I thought there, I thought I saw a specific, I'm sure it happened here somewhere.
If you'd like, I could easily follow up with him tomorrow with the good news and ask him to commit to some times and give them to you.
Sure, thank you.
Good, good.
This is a highway access right-of-way permit from Mr. and Mrs. Greg Whitehorn.
Yes, Chad's here. He can talk about the access right-of-way permit, but it doesn't look too complicated, right, Chad?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, just up from their existing driveway to their home now.
They're next to the golf course.
Yeah, they're on Cornell. It's the last home before you get up to the golf course on that side of the road, yep, heading uphill.
Do I make a motion to approve it?
With, with conditions?
With conditions, still stated by the highway department.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Would the poll say no?
Is it the usual conditions?
Yes, that it's 15-inch covert and installed in such a way to keep water from running into the town road. If you want, I can send you it over for the names.
Yep. Next is the assessors' office errors and omissions on parcel 1674.
Yes, this is about as simple as an error and omission can be, Mr. Chairman. There was simply a typographical error on the assessors' part where the number was input into their software incorrectly. The, the original value was $138,800 for business equipment. And in fact, that number should have been one, I'm sorry, 13,800. By a factor of 10, you know, it's zero. So they're asking for permission to make that change.
Change it.
I'll make a motion to make that change.
Further discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Would the poll say no? And lastly, we have the resignation of trustee Brad Keith.
Yes. He had to step down. His, you know, his business is doing so well that he's just running out of time. He has served as the chair of the trustees and we hate to lose him, but certainly we can't hold that against him. That would leave us with a vacancy through town meeting, which you could certainly fill if you wanted. I gather that our town clerk and treasurer is willing to serve till town meeting at which a new election could be held.
She is. I spoke with her today. So the trustees are in favor of her being appointed. She's been in on all our meetings, as it stands anyways. That's what we talked about. She's his mom. So that's where we are.
Do we need a motion for the appointment?
I'll make a motion to appoint Helen McKinley to take Brad Keith's part as, on the board of public, what is it, board of public trustees?
Trustee to the public fund.
Trustee, public funds, yeah.
Further discussion? Would the paper say aye?
Aye.
Would the poll say no? Hold it going on. If I read my page right, John, that's the last item we have on.
Yes, sir. That's right.
We close the open section, turn the media room to the executive section.